Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to the regular Abington School Committee for January 2025. We are here in the Abington Middle High School library. If everybody could please stand to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we move into the full agenda tonight, I would just like to ask if anybody would like to address the committee? If they, please, just come to the podium and state their name and address for the units. Okay. Seeing then, first order of business, if the committee could review the minutes from our meeting on January 7th, I'd just be looking for a motion to approve or amend. And a second.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Reporter, the Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Chris Bosta. Do you want me to turn it to you?
Sure.
The first presenter tonight is the Science Department update, Ms. Nicole Corbett, the department head. Yep. Take your time, though.
All right. So, I was told to do a bit of a demonstration with you guys.
Just don't pull anything off.
All right. So I'm going to ask for some cooperation here. A year and a half ago, I brought my environmental science class to school committee to present on our PFAS project when we tested various streams in town. This afternoon, I went to one of those streams to get you guys a water sample to filter the PFAS out so we can test how much PFAS is in the water sample. So, in order to do this, we have one of our cycloper test kits. I am going to ask that somebody is going to pour the water into the test kit, and you're going to have to hold it to filter it during the course of my presentation. By the time I'm done, it should be done filtering.
Okay.
And then I have to send it back to the company for them to run their analysis on it.
Okay.
And you all totally do that.
Yeah, I follow you.
Ironically enough, that was going to be my brain when we were going to go with that, so.
Shocker, really. All right. It's got a little disk in here. I'm going to get this one on the gloves.
I'm good at messy. I can make messy even more messy. What I can't do is put on gloves.
All right, you're going to fill it to the 250 milliliters on the side. It says on the side right here. Okay. You're just going to watch it filter for me.
Oh, that's, wow, wicked gross.
Yep.
Yes.
And stop. Or maybe a little more, but just a dash. Got some nice floaties in there.
There you go. Yeah, so this came from French Streams. So this came right off Spruce Street. It was one of our test sites from a couple of years ago. So.
Beautiful.
But that's not drinking water.
This is not.
So Heidi, it's okay that it looks like that?
It's the drinking water supply, but it's not their drinking. As long as I don't get these two. So I'm going to time that. When it's done, I'm done. All right. Good evening. My name is Nicole Corbett. I'm the Science Department head for grades seven through 12, and tonight I am presenting an update for the Science Department. First order of business is areas of growth and the progress that we have made on those. Last year, we suggested that we should try to get more materials access for new staff. We have had a lot of staff members since 2019 join the Science Department, and what we've been trying to do is trying to leave them so they are not singletons and having to try to make their own materials. So what we did last year is every new teacher is partnered with another more experienced teacher, and they are co-teaching the same sections. This has been challenging in the past in the department because of the licensing piece. Chemistry is locked into a chemistry license. Physics is locked into a physics license. So what we've done is we have an experienced teacher who may be teaching one section of chemistry along with the chemistry teacher. Physical science isn't a one-off anymore. That's being co-taught. Environmental science has some co-teaching as well. So that way, we don't have new teachers just being left trying to make their own materials. Refining Biology Bootcamp, this was a program we started two years ago. Originally, the first year we ran it, we ran it as a full-day program where students went through, basically rotated through all their science teachers, and learned a section of biology material for the Biology MCAS. It was productive, but the single day was a struggle by the end. So we were all pretty worn out by the end of the day, and the kids were worn out doing biology all day. So we broke into two half-days last year that seemed to work a lot better for everybody's sake. Building scientific literacy, this has been an important focus area for the department. We want students to try to apply their scientific learning. And what that means is it's great that you can regurgitate the material. Tell me what the material means and how we use the material. So all of our formative and summative assessments, I've been asking teachers to incorporate some sort of application-based question, whether this be some sort of open response or please apply the learning and tell me what the learning means. And we've been doing that now on pretty much all of our assessments, where they have to have an open response and write about the science, or do the math out and explain the math that goes behind the science. Areas of growth. We continue to use MCAS data to reinforce and rethink instruction and delivery of curriculum content. Even though MCAS is no longer a graduation requirement on the high school end, we're continuing to reinforce the importance of that test and make students aware that this is tied to still future scholarship opportunities. It's tied to school performance. But using those questions with the eighth grade and then the ninth grade, so we can see also where students may struggle with some of the content, and then go back and reinforce those areas. So for example, with our middle school, students on the previous MCAS tests struggled with physics and physical science. That was their weaker section. So the middle school teachers have been using half-days to give pre- and post-tests where they will go back, look at the areas, pull some MCAS questions that tie to physics and physical science, and work through those with the kids. Because the eighth-grade test is very cumulative, so you're looking at materials they may have learned in sixth grade and then forgot about by the time they get to eighth grade. Building on common practices. So we continue to develop consistent practices to help reinforce academic structure and expectations. Very quickly, I have a handout here. This is going to tie to some of the stuff we learned from our HQPA assessments last year. So mid-year last year and as well as this year, we ran, we'll call it a mid-year lab. It was a high-quality performance assessment where students had to work in the class to design a lab and then write a lab report. And we, overall, it was successful in that students successfully, for the most part, wrote good lab reports, but it highlighted a lot of areas where we could grow. And those included things like deadlines. Did students meet deadlines? This included things like plagiarism. Were students plagiarizing? How do you address that piece? And trying to get some consistency there. So after the last HQPA, we met as a department and drafted some policies that we tried to make for the department to, based on what we learned from that HQPA. I can pass some of these out and just, but I gave out this here.
Oh, thank you.
So we ran this again this year, and this was what I gave out to the department beforehand, too. And we just, we took everything we learned from the last one and tried to tighten some things up. Additionally, building on the scientific literacy, mentioned that this was something we had been tightening up on, and this is something we're going to continue to tighten up on, and this is the application of the science. This is something that, keep hitting that button. This is something that I think anyone in a science class struggles with, is how do you apply the science to real-world situations? We're trying to do that on the tests and quizzes, but specifically now, I'm really trying to hit this home with lab report writing. And we do the labs. You complete the lab. What did the lab show you? And not just through the introduction in the procedure section, which tells you about the lab, really emphasizing analysis of data. How's that data, what does that data mean? What conclusions can you draw from this lab? And really trying to build that up. What we do, we do a lot of different labs. We are a very hands-on department. We have a lot of hands-on activities. HQPA, we recently did, some students in some classes were building different roller coasters. That's on the bottom right corner. STEAM over at the middle school does a lot of building and construction activities. My class did the PFAS project last year, and we got some pictures from that. Last year in the last day of school, I taught some of the kids how to fly drones, because I'm a drone pilot, so we brought the little drone in, so we took a picture of the high school as their parting gift. And we tried to get some guest speakers in, so I've been bringing them, the meteorologist from Channel 4, to talk to my classes, and he's been coming in a couple of times to talk about science in your career. So alignment to the Abington Public Schools Strategic Plan. So as we mentioned, a lot of what I mentioned before is just going to be repeated here. Attempting to approve student outcomes through vertically and horizontally aligning curriculum, instruction, and assessment. We continue to collaborate as departments, really trying to help the new teachers by partnering them with veteran teachers to help align some of the curricula. And we've been reviewing the curriculum guides this year to make sure they are up to date. A lot of them had been redone within the last five or so years in science, but there's some that were floating around that we're trying to get back up to date as well. Including, excuse me, improving inclusive procedures and practices to increase academic success, social-emotional learning, and engagement for all students. So this is the continuing of developing consistent expectations and practices to provide academic structure across the department. I think one of the important things in all of our classes is structure, and just across the school, is having structures in place for consistency's sake, and also, it's just so important to kids to have structure. And when you come to school, you have some sort of routine and some sort of expectations. And talk a little bit about the AP numbers. So this slide has a lot of data on it. I'll try to break this down the best I can. So we were able to get AP Biology data dating back to 2020. The first column underneath the dates is the percentage of eligible students in a grade who took that particular class. This is a little bit difficult to explain because there are prerequisites to take AP Biology. So to take AP Bio, junior or senior, recommendation of a teacher, and had to have taken Biology and Chemistry and Physics or be enrolled in Physics. So this does tighten up the eligibility criteria for the class. One thing in the next column that you'll notice, that is number of students in the class and the number of students who took the test. And this is consistent across both AP Science classes. We're getting students who sign up for the class, but the test has become optional to take, so less students have been taking the test, even though you may have a bump up in the number of students enrolled. Pluses and minuses. Pluses are you'll get a larger student body who may be interested in taking the class and taking a more advanced science class. The downside is the test aspect, the number of kids who take the test. And in some cases, this seems to be showing a little bit with the scores as well. So this is, the rest of it is kind of self-explanatory. It's the percentage of students who took the test, who scored in each of the categories. I will say, most colleges for college credit are only accepting a four or a five. A couple will accept a three, but that's, number is shrinking. Any questions on this slide? It's data-heavy.
Can I ask one question?
Yes, absolutely.
Especially because we see such a drop in the number of students taking the test. We've got 23 enrolled in 2024, and only 16 took the test last year. Do you see a difference with the higher number of participants last year in the pace and the ability to cover all material as a result of the larger pool and maybe larger spectrum of academic?
Yeah, so I teach AP Environmental Science, and I can actually, I'll speak personally on my end. I've had very large, the class started two years ago, and I'll show the AP Enviro slide. I think the larger AP classes, more kids, definitely affects the pacing, and I don't think there's an AP teacher in the school who won't argue that. Easier to get through more material with smaller groups of kids. So yes, it does affect the pacing of the class. I'll say for AP Environmental, it is almost impossible to get through an AP Environmental curriculum. AP Biology generally does it, but it's a squeeze. And then when we start, especially when we started to try to put the mid-year in, it left very little wiggle room for us to be able to really get, you crunch.
Okay.
Can I just share one comment towards that?
Yeah.
The purpose of opening it up to more students is to increase equity of access for students, right? So that they're not limited. It's a trade-off. It's a balance that we, as a school community, are willing to strike, that we want more students to have access to that higher-level science, higher-level English, higher-level math, in exchange for us knowing that the more students who take the test, take the class but don't take the test, that means your percentage is going to suffer, right?
Right.
Just by the numbers.
Makes sense. Okay.
So if nothing has changed, AP was supposed to be a class for students who are capable of performing at a second or third-year college level. So I know that we want to get kids exposed to that, but there aren't that many kids who are capable in high school of performing at that level. Is it possible to do, to keep these classes with the kids who are capable of doing it and still teach the challenging high-level curriculum at level one?
So this is actually what I'm going to talk about coming up in a minute, because we've been, I've been discussing some options with the Guidance Department Administration a little bit about what possibly we could do going forward to keep that high-level exposure. There are some dual enrollment options that I think may be more feasible that would help with this. Though the table's napped into one slide. So this is the 2024, this is a comparison with the global numbers. So this was the global percentages of where students ended up. And then, no, it's state and global, so state at the top, global at the bottom, excuse me. And then the difference with Abington High School versus the state, and then the global at the bottom. And then AP Environmental Science, similar deal. So this class started in 2023, 2024 school year. So this one has had high enrollment, and similar situation as AP Bio. In my case, I have a lot less kids who end up signing up to take the test. One thing with AP Environmental Science is that I think the name gives the indication to students that maybe it's not the most challenging of the AP Science classes, and then they sign up and they take it, and the curriculum is all application-based science. So it's a very, it's an interesting class because it's a science class, but it's also very policy-driven. So it's, take the science that you've learned through your science career, here's some new science as well, and then apply it to real-world policy, apply it to zoning laws, apply it to, right now, we're doing, we're just, we're doing urbanization and why the urban areas developed and how the suburbs developed, and then how do you accommodate for that? Please make the best plans possible based on this information. And if you're a high school kid, this is a challenge, and especially, you know, it's really thinking outside the box. So trying to work on that and more with, like I said, the application-based science is very important. It's a similar deal, though, with, as with AP Bio, where the scores are below the global and the state, but also not all the kids sign up to take the class. And in my case, I get a lot less numbers. How AP classes are advertised, though, kids rotate through the classrooms where AP classes are usually offered from the younger grades, and they can see what the AP classes are working on. Freshmen, sophomores often hear about these classes. They see the classroom setups. They hear about it through word of mouth. They'll see the labs that students are working on. In the spring of sophomore year is when students can start looking at AP offerings. I didn't forget to mention AP Environmental Science is senior-only. That also sometimes affects who's taking that AP test at the end of the year, because a lot of the kids say senior year halfway through, we're wrapping up unfortunately, and you're not. So this, we try to match them with their academic interests, their future plans, and their current science performance, and see if AP is a good fit. AP Science classes continue to have medium to high enrollment. One piece we did add this year that did affect enrollment was AP Biology, wanted to have a physics prerequisite, which was not there before, and that did drop enrollment significantly. But AP Environmental has stayed pretty much the same rate, 18, this year. One thing that we are pondering for the future is, based on the mixed scores in the AP classes, continuing to look at equitability for students to take high-level science classes and really get exposed to college-level science without the restrictions of the AP curriculum, where there is just a lot of content. And unfortunately, with the scheduling up at the high school, we don't have a lot of time to do the lab component. We try to squeeze that in, but they're 49-minute classes, and these labs take two to three hours. So if you can imagine, we spend a week just to do a single lab, and we try to get through eight, 10 labs in a year. So that, that's tricky. So Quincy College is offering a dual enrollment option for Abington High School, where students, we could take one of our honors classes, look at the Quincy College syllabus, compare it, and see if dual enrollment could be an option, where you have an honors class that could instead be counted for college credit. So what that would do is students would sign up, they would pay, I believe it's about $350, but I can't voucher pricing, where they would pay for the credits. You would design your class where it does meet the requirements for a college-level class, but also it gives you a little bit more flexibility, where you're not locked into the AP College Board curriculum that doesn't necessarily 100% match a college class. I'll say when I'm teaching AP Environmental, I have my master's in Environmental Science, the AP Enviro curriculum took a four-year undergrad, took pieces of all the classes I took and smushed it into this single class. So it's an interesting class, but also the cohesion piece is challenging. So administration and guidance have been working pretty hard on looking at dual enrollment options for Abington High School, and I'm looking at this seriously for Environmental Science to start, and then maybe seeing what some of our options could be going forward, where students would get, this would be equivalent of a freshman college class, but at the same time, we would have a little more flexibility to build a curriculum that one might better suit the needs of our students, two, would have a better lab component and the time built in for that, and three, have to be cross-checked with a local college, where you'd still have to be in contact with them to make sure that everything's adding up. So this is, I think, something that could be considered in the future, and then maybe phase away from the AP, where you, instead of having this sluggish kids who are taking the class, we're not taking the test. And then in my case, when it's a senior-only class, they, they come there for, they get the grade for about halfway through, they get it for the college transcript, and then you get mixed engagement after, especially, you know, the ones who really want to take the test, and you have a large class that starts to take away from that, trying to get those kids to take that test piece. So, yep, that is what I have. Any questions? Yes?
I have two. So are we looking at still keeping AP and adding in the dual enrollment so that you all have the option for both?
Yeah, so I've been discussing this with guidance. I think the first year, at least, try and see what both could look like, and then after that subsequently, choose one or the other and see which best meets the needs of our students, best fits with the schedule for Abington High School.
And then my second question is in the other packet that you gave us second. Just wondering, on the department late work policy, it's just a little quick question.
Yeah.
So it, it says that work can be handed in for up to five days after the deadline. Is there a progressive penalty during those five days, or is technically the deadline really that five days after the first deadline?
So technically, I, my personal opinion, it's based circum, my opinion, it's based circumstantially. So when I do it, if there is an extenuating circumstance, I don't dock, but if we have a circumstance where kids are like, oh, just, I'm not going to do it, then I start docking. But we did put the five days in for just everyone, because people do have mixed opinions on this.
Okay. So they do, they get a deadline, but they don't have to turn it in until five days after that deadline?
So we were trying this this year, and I want to try to, what do you call it? Based on what we get this year, I at least want to put something in so we're not getting work. I still have students who try to pass in work 60 days late.
No, I firmly support a very firm deadline.
Yes, yeah, I go this, we got to cut somewhere. So I at least want to put a structure in where it's, we're going to cut here. With my classes, I tell them that I'm taking 10 points off unless there's an extenuating circumstance. That has forced a lot of them to stop the, we're going to pass it in too late, and it's, I get work a lot more on time. Some teachers wanted to just say, well, I'll take it through this chunk of time, and I'll let that for about, you know, we'll have that five-day window, and then next year, I want to see if we can, where we can go from there. Yes.
Couple of questions. First, I love that you bring in the meteorologists and try and get, like, real-world interest so that students understand what science means for them post-grad. Is there a science fair at any point in middle or high school? Because I'm not fully there yet.
Not anymore.
Okay.
So that ended in 2013? Yes.
When, what age was that before?
So it used, so unfortunately.
I do believe we might have a state science fair award winner here, is that?
Congratulations. That wasn't a planted question.
No, it's okay.
That was your first.
Actually, it was funny, because I was reading, I was trying to, doing some research on the science fair over the weekend. I actually put a little info about the science fair in that packet, because I wanted some of the teachers to see, when students go and do a formal lab and then have to present it, what these judges are looking for, for the criteria, and show that they're really looking for the scientific method. So the state science fair, there's a middle school and a high school version. We used to have a high school version that was grades nine to 12, and basically, honors classes here would be required to do it as part of the requirement for the science class, as in you had to write a lab, a formal research paper, that was 10 pages, and then a five-page formal lab report with a three, the tri-fold board, and then you could present it to the school, then you had regionals and states. 2012, 2013, I believe it phased out. I was in college at the time. My brother was in school here, and it was somewhere in this mix. As of, when I was looking into this over the weekend a little bit more, a lot of schools have not participated in the regionals and state science fairs. It seems like that body is shrinking. Why, I couldn't 100% tell you, but it seems like COVID did put a dent in participation in that.
Okay. And then what do we have? So we've covered the AP. What do we have for additional course offerings at the high school? So freshman year, everyone takes Biology?
Yes, so, soft, so you start with Biology. Freshman year is Biology Level 1, Biology Level 2. With the MCAS, we had a second class, Principles of Biology, if kids didn't, if sophomore year that they would take to try to pass the MCAS. Otherwise, they would go to Physical Science or Chemistry. Chemistry would be more of the, we are pretty solid in science, we're performing well, and you go to the Chemistry class. Physical Science would be, we need a little bit more reinforcement in science or math. After Chemistry, you go to traditionally Physics. After chemistry, you go to traditionally physics, we try to push, put kids into, some of them may double up in physics and AP Biology. And then you end up in anatomy, environmental science, level one, level two, or AP Environmental Science.
So anatomy and environmental science is one and two are the other potential, I'll call them electives, for students to continue science career without the AP?
Yep, so you could, yep, so you can have a student who goes biology, chemistry, physics, it could be environmental, could be anatomy, and then you don't have to take any of the AP.
And those enrollments have been consistently good or any trend analysis there?
For the most part, level one environmental science is usually has one or two sections per year. I'd say, we'll call it a one and a half, I could, so it's a pretty decent enrollment. Anatomy has decent enrollment, that's in the mid twenties if you were to total up all the kids who take that.
Okay. And do they do dissections in anatomy? Okay. So your forty-nine minutes, they're still able to do dissections?
That's, yep, that's a whole class period, so they will do dissection day and go.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, of course, I have a question. Well, first, would you like, it's not completely, but we're down to drips here. Would you like your gloves back?
Sure, I'll dispose of this.
Oh, that one just broke, sorry.
That's okay, it's all going in the trash.
Thank you. I feel like last time you reported to us, you were talking about bringing lab reports and things down to the middle school level.
Yes.
So they have a wider, I know that I'm seeing it happen in real time. Are you starting to see that skill set filter up? So, because I think you're a year into that?
Yes, we're seeing that more with the biology classes that came up this year. They seem to have a stronger foundation in that, which seemed to be good. We had several professional developments with the middle school too, trying to look at that piece. The middle school does a good job where they at least set the foundation for that and trying to incorporate more analysis based things, but they've been doing a really good job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Corbett.
No problem.
Up next is gonna be Mr. Tim Leonelli, the Director of Music.
Hi, everybody. Nice to see you all. Thank you for everything you do for your kids and thank you all for being here tonight. One of the questions that's been really bugging me recently is, why music? Why do we, why do we study music? Why is music in our schools? Why is this something that we, that we really strive to continue for our children? And I'm a Target learner, I love going on the Target app and there's this really cool feature where the more money you spend, the more like, like awards that you can give to like nonprofits, I don't know if anyone's kind of found this in with the section. And about four or five years ago, I was like, man, I didn't know about this. I have so many points, I could give to anything I want. I'm scrolling through, looking at what music things do they have? I was like, oh, wait a second, most of these are homeless shelters or supporting students that need, need help with reading, substance abuse and it just really caught me. It's like, you know, I was so interested in like really supporting the arts and I was like, there's so many incredible things that are important, but just, this is something that I still think about today and it's, it's one of those things I have to kind of remind myself. It's a false equivalency. Everything is incredibly important and just seeing the kids and, you know, our heart counter community comes together around music performances just reminds me that our work is still very important and it keeps me going. And also as a resident of Abington, I want to make sure that we have a great, strong music program here as well. So I just wanted to start off with that because that's been something that's been bugging me, especially as I'm doom strolling on TikTok. I don't know if any of you do that too, just keep going, it's like, oh my goodness gracious, it's time to get on. So, Tim Leonelli, Director of Music, resident here in Abington and I'm excited to give you an update of our department. I have a button, excellent. What I love about the vision of the graduate, it just, it just encompasses everything we do in almost every single minute of music making, you know? To play an instrument or just saying, you're thinking about what do I need to do to make sure that we're engaged, like how do we do it? How does, thinking around with my neighbors, how, why sound compared to them? How do I sound compared to myself or the instruments left and right of me? And then it's secular, it kind of goes back to the top, the way it's like, okay, this is where I'm at now, where can I get better? And it's, and it's so much fun to see these kids grow, especially the seventh and eighth grader students. This is probably one of the most challenging years of students I've taught, but from this point right now, they're, they're doing so well and it just makes me feel really good. And, and our music classes, as I reported to you last year, one of the things I really encourage our department to think about is we're, we're not like a music maker, music entertainer, we're, we're community building, we're community building, we're creating kids to work together, building some great social competencies and music is our vehicle. So, you know, making sure that we have a positive environment for our kids, giving team obstacles, this is one thing that I stole and I'm gonna give them credit, Matt Harden over at Hanover, he does something called Turn-in Talks, it's something that's new to me, but oh my goodness, this one single aspect has changed my teaching in just a single year and I've seen incredible engagement. So trying to find these, these positive ways to keep our kids growing and really, I hate to admit it, that I'm not really helping them, I'm just stepping back a little bit and giving them a little bit of space. And then of course providing, you know, it's those challenging things year after year. Every year is progressively harder. While I love Hot Cross Buns, the great song, when you get to high school, you want to do something else and we're working on Phantom of the Opera right now, so. We are part of what I reported last year, like a self-evaluation as, as we have turnover in our school, in our music department. This is the first year where we haven't had a full-time music staff member that's stayed at least thirty years. So we had Joyce Harrington, Steve Shannon and Charlie Blanchett, I'll get back to the latter in just a moment. You know, so, so we've had some, some turnaround in the retirement and we want, you know, we really just wanted to see where we are right now. And our music staff right now is Rebecca Harrison, incredible vocal teacher. If you get a chance to go to any of her concerts, she's, she's done wonderful work. A late hire, actually, whoever was taking the job left really suddenly and we found Rebecca, she's done incredible work. Annika Schostedt, she's a new hire, she's working incredibly hard, she's a long way to go in her music career, but she's an excellent choice for here in Abington. So that, she's a general music teacher, I'm looking to provide her some more band challenges down the road. And then our elementary team, we have Mercy Valencourt, we have Steve Finn, Mercy does Beaverbrook, Steve does Thursdays at Woodsdale and then we have Charlie Blanchett on Fridays. I, I cannot get rid of him, he is, he's too good to us and he is so great. But our teachers are excellent, they're, they're just good people, they're really good to be around, they push me, I'm, I, there are days where I'm just like, but they just remind me, just, we just, we do great work for, for our students and so, and we're seeing that through our, our growing ensembles, the ensembles are growing, not just numbers-wise numbers, you'll see a trend with the numbers, but also the sound quality, like the enjoyment that there, you see the kids, but also that you as a listener will experience. It's something that's incredibly exciting. And then part of that turn-in talk that I mentioned just a moment ago, it's healthy student engagement, especially after COVID, you know, our students just really didn't want to engage with each other. Now we're slowly seeing that really progress, especially in our, our music ensembles. My favorite part, curriculum is incredibly behind and I just want to be full, full, transparent with the committee and with the community. I think there's, there's a lot of work that needs to be done. It was originally designed horizontally, like full year, like you're working on rhythm for full year and what we found, especially this year with a new staff member doing general music, is it wasn't very helpful to determine like what we do by month, but you get a good sense by like holidays that kind of give us a little, and concerts give us little pinpoints, but on our radar, we really need to work on our curriculum. So that's gonna be something over the next, rest of this year and next year that you hopefully will see some improvement with that. So it's just outdated. And the one thing I mentioned last year, simple adjustments. One of the things I want to make sure that I do on my end is before I ask for incredible huge things that, that we use our resources that the town has given us incredibly wisely. So doing simple, simple things to make huge yield. So the first thing is our marching band with actually not a lot addition to cost, basically we'd basically be doing the same amount of events, but we're doing US Band competitions. I left it over there, let me go get it. Consistent participations at US Bands competitions as, as increased engagement, but also our, our success. This is our first place trophy with an eighty-nine point six, was it? Thank you. So, so that, that's been a success over the past couple of years, just, just by doing consistent participations at these events. They're, they're very low cost, I think local events are free, we pay a membership fee and then we pay for some of the larger events. Our joint AMS band, sorry, excuse me, our joint AMS and AHS concerts, our band got really big and it just, it, it still drives me crazy and it gives me nightmares, is how much we have to bring on and off, but one thing that we did to make it a little bit easier was we have one night that it's a seventh and eighth grade and high school band, one night that it's seventh, eighth grade and chorus, high school chorus. And just with that, logistically incredibly easy, much easier to manage, but also they get to see each other, they get to see across buildings. So it's like if I'm an eighth grader, I'm like really nervous about it, next year my parents are telling me pull this, 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 and all of a sudden I'm like looking at this high school player, it's like, oh, they're playing the same instrument as me, oh, that's kind of cool, I like what you're doing, you're, you're seeming kind of nice, I want to do band next year or sing next year. So that type of engagement has been really fun and we do one song together, at least one song together in the concert and that's been just incredibly worthwhile, not only to our students' parents, but also the community at, at large. My favorite, our grade five and six concert, we get those two groups as together, it's incredibly big, I'll show you the number in just a minute and, in a minute. And Santa came again and said we are the best grade five and six band again, so that's two years in a row. So, so just, this is actually, I stole this idea in terms of building community from Heidi and, so I don't mean to put you on the spot, but Heidi, we were talking to the effect a couple of years ago, pandemic time, about building a community, parents, getting people to buy in, you mentioned, you know, when you go to soccer games, the parents are interacting together, really, you know, supporting each other, they're students, but then also wanting to stay more engaged. So doing stuff like this, you know, simple, like bringing a little Santa, just a, ho, 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 we're looking for things like that. So that's a continuation of that effort. With the support of Adam Gunn, we've been finding additional places where we can support our veterans. Historically, we've had the marching band do Veterans Day Parade and Memorial Day Parade and then we saw an opportunity with the luncheon to do a little bit more, so we brought our concert band, which is very different ensemble, to go perform for our, for the luncheon. And then this year, I was like, wait a second, we have a bus, I have thirty extra seats, why don't we bring the chorus? So we kind of stormed the gates a little bit and just, just provided not only a little bit more performance opportunities for our students, because two concerts a year isn't enough, we could always need to find more, but also showing our community what we do and we take very seriously the, the role of being an ambassador of the school and not showcasing just our department, but the work that we all collectively do for, for our children. Also two more things that I forgot to mention, we also in progress, these simple adjustments, we're consistently pushing participation in local festivals. We had six students, choral students participate in the district festival, which is basically like the best of the best. You have to audition, you have to learn scales, you have to sight sing, so that's basically, you get a piece of music for the first time, you have to sing it without really learning it. It's incredibly challenging, I would not like to do it again, I did it back in college, but we had six students make it to the festival, so they auditioned and they made it and that's an incredible number. I think Abington has had maybe one or two, but six is a, is a, is a very incredible number for us, it's probably one of the highest Abington's had in some time, which is great. And then Bridgewater State Middle School, excuse me, Bridgewater University Middle School Honor Band, we had nine students participate in that and Chris, you received an email from Dr. Running sharing his regards on that. So finding these positive ventures and then also there's a high school version of that coming up where take seven students who are accepted. So we know that our, all of our classes in schooling and time on learning is incredibly important, so anytime we find these opportunities where we can steal our kids, we're gonna, you know, out of their classes, we're gonna make sure it's worthwhile and we're gonna make sure that they make up their, their work, so they don't fall behind, so. I know Mr. Born's right here, so is he gonna hold me to that? Some of this is continuations, this is now we're in our third year of consistent and dedicated elementary music teachers, that's helped with scheduling and, and all the buildings. I definitely am now starting to see the positives here in the middle school as our class sizes are growing, so as, as we're able to continue that, that's, that's been very wonderful. Historically, it's, the schedules were this way, which is that horizontally, so like you'd have high school for one teacher, middle school, middle school, and then the afternoon was elementary, but by flipping it around, it's, it's been very good with providing coverage. Making sure that we have our AMS and AHS teachers teaching in their primary fields, like when we go to college, we really specialize in like voice or, or band or pedagogy, so it's, it's very helpful when we're, we're going to our class and, and teach what we feel very comfortable in teaching. And I joked last year, I could do chorus, but you really don't want me to do chorus, I'm an okay singer, but I can, I can do it. So, so, so far, so good. And I mentioned kind of a little bit about the consistency of our marching band participations, consistent rehearsals, performances, definitely getting, seeing the, the yields, seeing the yields in that and not just with awards, but also in student and parent data. I selfishly liked that three-day weekend in October and I was hoping that the students and families would be like, no, we don't want to do a competition that weekend. And I surveyed a bunch of things and they said they want to do it, I think it was a ninety-plus percent percentile, like we want to do a competition on that weekend. It made me think, now I want to do one, so we, we've actually, actually in part of that data collection, parents and students want to do more competitions and I thought six was a lot this year, so they're, they're, they're pushing me, so I'm happy to apply to where, where we can, so. And I have a little note, show award, I did that, excellent. Now the best part. Not all the times, but program health and success can be measured in enrollment and retention. There's so many facets to, to students continuing from fifth grade to seventh grade, eighth grade to high school. What students have opportunities to do and be involved with is, is enormous compared to, you know, even ten years ago, even when I was a student. So it's good to, to make note of it so you can see trends, you see upward trends as coming out of COVID. We are one of the best-positioned bands of our size in our area with coming out of COVID and a lot of band directors, when I tell them that we have a hundred and eighty-eight students in our grade five and six band, they're like, what? So it's something to be excited about. So happy to report to the committee that the third number down, one eighty-eight in the green, that is the combined number of those two, those ensembles and that's the largest that Abington has had. That is not the largest by grade five and grade six, but combined is. And by, from that one eighty-eight, we typically see a little bit of a drop after the December concert, I have not seen a big drop, so we've been working, and I think some of that turn-in talk is part of this. I think that the culture that we've built is gonna help with retention in, in those grade levels, so we're excited to see that. Our seventh, eighth grade band's eighty-five right now, I think about the ninety, hundreds gonna be about that trend. We had a tough seventh, current seventh grade class, so we had a little bit of a dip, but I can see that coming up. High school band, currently we have twenty-four students full year and ten students half year. Our grade seven, eighth chorus is not the largest it's ever been, it's been closer to the two-hundred-plus numbers, but the hundred and twenty is a very good manageable number, those definitely all the kids that really want to sing and do their best. And then I do have a mistake here, the chorus numbers at the very right is, should be sixteen is full year, ten is half year. Full year being that they were able to fit the entire class in, in their schedule, half year is they either had to choose or some type of obligation that they had to, to do. Consider the possibilities. I keep, I love this slide. We do have room to grow, there's so many choices and so many things that we have to do and this is definitely down, down the road possibilities, but I'm, I'm really starting to hear interest in more, not so much AP Advanced Music Theory, but more for the introductionary classes, like Introduction to Keyboard, Introduction to Drumming. I think there's opportunities on the high school side for something like that. We talked about classes by genre, I think that could be of interest, but I really think like the introduction to like certain skills, it would be important in, to some students. And some of these you actually don't even have to do in the band room, you could just move some, some stuff around into a dedicated room. So there's opportunities to, to grow. Of course, this is probably not a near-future thing, but this is some ideal thoughts and considerations for the future. Mr. Born, I think it would be really fun to teach a Taylor Swift class, that's, I just, I, I, and I like the name, The Heir's Tour. Performing classes, the first one I didn't request, the second one I did request in this year's budget. I'm, I'm starting to notice that, that with the number of, of band students also means the number of band instruments. So I laugh, but I'm also crying on the inside, so, so much, so much to do. I think out of a hundred and eighty-eight grade five and sixth instruments, maybe about twenty of those are like snare jumps, instruments that we have on school. So that means there's a hundred and sixty or so instruments that, that, that students have, clarinets, flutes, and why- 160 or so instruments that 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 students have clarinets, flutes. And while we are maybe more responsible for about 40 or so instruments that we loan to students, you know, if a kid comes up to me, he's like, Mr. Lee, now like my flu doesn't work. And can you fix it? You know, I have to be able to fix that. So that's been a little bit of a struggle on the music side. So I don't I need to get you all more information, like, like what band sizes compared to Rockland and local bands of our size. You know, I think it's larger. I think Abington is larger, but I want to get you some data on that. So I didn't think about that. So I'll provide that down the road. And then a dedicated music professional. So another cheaper option, if we're not able to maybe get a full time music teacher than someone that's just on deck that can help me with a lot of copying, moving equipment, stuff like that, just to name a few. And just to tag on to one more thing on the additional music teacher, as we're looking to next year's schedule and even to the future, one of the things that we're slowly start hearing, and I know many of you are hearing about it as well, is there's a lot of kids in Abington that that want to sing and perform. I think Wicked is part of this. So I slightly blame Wicked, if you've seen it, but it's an incredible movie musical, and I understand why a lot of kids want to sing. So an additional music teacher would assist us in providing, you know, opportunities for like, you know, grade five and six chorus, for instance. We do provide some singing opportunities in grade six, but it's not a singing dedicated class. So just some, just some thoughts and ideas. These are my more so areas to monitor, just to just to continue the conversation. Not one of these pieces have one easy fix, you know, making sure that we pay attention to scheduling of the high school ensembles. The larger the ensemble that we can create, the more that we can do. The veterans luncheon is a perfect example. Just because we weren't too small, it's easier for kids to want to commit and to support each other and in performing in a setting they're not familiar with. You know, just making sure that we do our best. And Mr. Born and I, we always we keep the conversation open, which I think is really helpful. It's one thing that we get mad at each other. We're not going to do that. But I think keeping the conversation open, seeing where we can find room to grow and dialogue with families. I think the one thing twofold that we're noticing is that when students get to closer to senior years, they sometimes get caught off guard that they can't do music in their last year. And our ensembles are probably one of the closest thing to a collegiate thing that we hear have here in the school where students kind of stay together by grade level. So that the vice play, let's say trumpet, and I'm a freshman, I could be by my freshman friends from freshman, sophomore, junior, and senior years. So I think the biggest thing that we can do is just communicate to families early on, like, hey, this is really important to you. Talk to your guidance counselors, talk to your, your peers, what are they doing? So so when you get down the road and closer, it's not a surprise decision. It's a decision that that you guys, everyone can make with the information as possible. And the second fold is, is as a department, we want to believe that these students that participate in chorus and band, they should try to, we would like to be them to be in all four years, not as a requirement, we encourage that. We do notice that as students, if they don't start or even do half year in their freshman year, they tend not to return. It's not just an Abington thing, it's actually a national thing. So if they don't do their first year transitioning into freshman year, let's say they take a year off, they most likely might not continue. Very various reasons, but socially is very, it could be an important one, meeting different friends that kind of getting pulled in different directions. And then also feeling like they fall behind, like, man, I missed this year, I missed out, I don't, I feel like I might fall behind. So we've we've created some really, some interesting workarounds, independent studies. We have a couple of those running right now to give some music students an ensemble experience. It's not the same, but I think we are looking for opportunities that we can, where we can. So that's an ongoing work for us. Continue to pay attention to, you know, our staff just teaching primary areas. You know, I'm a band guy, so trying to keep me with the band. We'll always do our best. And of course, if there's a stat, you know, where we need to really look at our schedule. This is always the one that I would love to just keep mentioning, the increase of instructional minutes in grades K through four. And there's a lot of challenges that we have. When I started, it was 45 minutes. If Steve Shannon would not let me down, if I didn't bring it up and just remind everybody that, you know, we used to have larger music classes, longer music classes. So a lot of challenges. I don't I don't know what the fix would be. I don't know what adjustments there could be. But, you know, it's a dialogue I hope to, you know, bring up down the road to to support our kids. But Mercy and the team does great work down there. And then continuing to see just consideration of how we kind of our department fits in the in the growth of Abington. You know, I've noticed that we're, I don't want to use the word stagnation. I think I think there's 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 somewhere we can go. I know we have limitations, but I'm curious, like, what's our next step? The marching band, we have some success, but the marching band was successful. So we're kind of getting back to that. So I don't have an answer for you. That's something that I think we'll continue to discuss. I'd love to hear your input, your thoughts on how we can best challenge and support our families, communities, and students. And I'm always open to anyone in the community if they want to have coffee or tea with me to discuss what they think as well. I'm a tea guy, and I have an espresso machine hidden behind my monitor in my classroom. So it helps. It definitely does help some days. And last slide. All right. So the Abington Cultural Council will be very mad at me if I do not bring this up. So I will bring this up. So I apologize. It was not in my slide. The Abington Cultural Council to this to this date, this is the third fiscal year that they have donated to my effort called Strike Up the Band. It's providing instruments for students to borrow that aren't unable to get an instrument. To date, they have assisted us with $4,500. Felicia and Chris, we were in the room where we opened up the $1,000 letter. That was exciting. Just so immediately after I sent a message to Sarah, we got to we got to order some stuff. And we got $1,000 worth of instruments I need to put away. But one of the things that when I was hired, I had this trend of enrollment for band based on rentals. And I noticed in the recession that it dropped quite a bit. So if a student can't afford an instrument, you know, we should try to find an opportunity or an instrument for them. And I can happy to report that this year, all students that wanted to play an instrument had the instrument of choice. I wasn't able to share that with you last year. So which is excellent. So that's a great effort with with your support and continuing. Sorry. So that's that's exciting. Plus helps our band numbers, which is great. So some informational items, craft fair went incredibly well. We have our next one. Music parents are right over here. They're really mad at me because I already made a mistake. It's Sunday, September 24. So apologies to the community and to the music parents this Sunday. Bring your friends, families. It's wonderful shopping spree, if you will. And it's great. It supports our music students. We are hosting festival, the Semesba Festival. So if district is like, like, like upper tier of like what you can do in Massachusetts, Semes is a little bit lower. It's still really hard to get into, but we'll host that here. We take over the entire school. So thank you, Abington, for letting us use your building. And it's just so much fun. So if you like music, you know, feel free to walk around. Our music department trip, we've just had some trouble getting that off the ground. Cost is probably the biggest thing. We used to have an annual trip every single year. Cost is probably the one that's been the issue. We also had initial plans with Grand Classroom. And that getting pulled the plug at the end of last school year just made it difficult to try to find the right trip for 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 this year. So we just we might do something local. I wish we could get back to our trip, our annual trips, but we just had so much trouble. So we might do something local. Historically, we've done New York, Washington, DC, and Disney World on a rotation. But we just haven't had luck getting that back and running post COVID. So fingers crossed, but we'll look to do find something local at least. And then our spring concerts, the dates are here, the 14th, we've got our seventh, eighth grade and high school chorus. On the 20th, we have our band concert, seventh, eighth and high school, and the grade five, six concerts on June 4, Wednesday, TBD, because I'm debating if I'm going to split up the bands just to make it a touch more manageable. But I will communicate to parents as early as I make that decision. So that's what I have for you. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Just one comment. Amazing numbers for the middle school drama club. So I just wanted to say that's just another testament to all of the great things that are going on with music and drama and the arts in our schools.
Yes, I think last count, it was 130 students. And I know the listserv is like 295 parents and students on the, so we have a lot of great interest in in music. And, you know, similar to the instruments, we want to get as many students that can play an instrument to play an instrument. On the drama side, we we I anticipated to the community, just so they're aware, I anticipated 80 students based on past years, and it surpassed what we had planned. And we were honestly caught off guard. And we didn't have a very, it took us a while to figure it out, but we figured it out. We're going to make it work. But we're doing the Little Mermaid Junior on, oh, I should have brought the dates, May, it's in May. We'll share the community. But yes, thank you. It's definitely a process, and there's definitely room to grow.
Tim, I was going to say, kudos to you, kudos to you and the department on the continued growth. I know the marching band is something to you have definitely put out there. It's definitely, I mean, it's obvious anybody's seen the growth in it. So just congratulations to you on that accomplishment. I guess just one ad lib, if you put an Eras Tour, I can tell you there's about, your seventh, eighth grade classes, the next couple of years will be completely filled. So.
Noted. Thank you.
Do you want to go?
Oh, no, you're welcome.
Just I also, more of a point of clarification, because you know, I know, the high school numbers, that number is not indicative of desire to take the class. That is very much a number.
Thank you for that. Yes. So, yes. So I think that there's there's definitely more students that that initially request to be a part of it. But as as schedules kind of fall in the piece place, it's it's tough. I don't I don't have a single fix for you. More music teachers, that that's there's still issues with building space.
Correct. And I, we know that there are students who felt strongly enough that there is an independent study, which we appreciate. But I think, under different circumstances, that number would be a whole lot higher. Unfortunately, just the music classes tend to go up against APs, things like that. So students who would normally be in there just didn't have the option this time.
And we currently, thank you. We currently have two high school electives. We have, we actually have more, but we just it's, we don't have the space or the staff to run them all. And if we would, I think the interest as they consistently see those roles, like guitar, intro to guitar or rock band, I think they would kick up. But since we just aren't able to consistently run them, that's where we, you know, we kind of lose them. But the ones that we are running right now is Introduction to Acting. That's only a semester. I could see that being a year long course. I could see a lot of kids, especially drama kids coming up the pipeline, wanting to participate in that. And Music Production Engineering, which is just literally creating music from your laptop. We had a huge enrollment, initial interest, like 20, 20, 20, I'll just stick with the lower number, 20, which surprised us. I thought we were thought it was going to be lower. It was a new class that was proposed by the music department. So definitely some room to grow.
And to add on to that, one of the trends I'm actually seeing firsthand, interestingly enough, is people are looking at academic classes, but for some of the students who are going onto college tracks, some of the more technical based colleges out there are actually giving performing arts scholarship opportunities because they're trying to diversify their bodies as well. So I guess a shout out for the kids who aren't quite sure if music is a path that they can still continue if they're doing an academic track. It is absolutely, if you can work it, I mean, it's, yes, let's try and get the high school numbers back. So but thank you for everything.
I just wanted to say thank you. And your enthusiasm towards music, I think, is contagious. And that's what is encouraging all these students to want to play instruments and parents to participate. I absolutely love it. But I do have a question. You mentioned that for the music classes, you wish they could be longer. Like, how long were they they used to be? And how long are they currently?
When I started as a brass tutor, nine years ago, they were closer to 45 minutes. I don't remember the exact number off the top of my head. But so I was when I was doing grade four band, it was 45 minutes. I don't, I don't have, I didn't do my research to see what took the place of of that. There's a lot of incredible things we have to do. But but I just noticed that, teacher preps, stuff like that. I think we are their prep, I think.
Yeah, I think it's it's related to the enrollment numbers and staffing and contractual obligations. So like the elementary schools, teachers are given a 30 minute prep based on contract. And with the number of teachers that we have, you can only fit so many classes of music, art, technology, et cetera, into the schedule in a day. And so the longer those periods are, the fewer you can fit in a day. So then you're not able to give all the teachers their 30 minutes of prep. So right now, the structure we have, the enrollment we have, the number of teachers we have, they are 30 minute classes for art and music, technology.
Oh, and then my other question was, for the marching band, we include the VOTAC students, correct?
Yes, yes. It's an initiative that goes back to Jack Bailey, a long, long time ago. So the short answer is yes, yes.
Are they able to participate in the concert band as well, even though I don't know if that's like a conflict because of scheduling during school?
Timing, it's timing. Yeah, I can't recall the rules at top of right off the top of my head. The short answer is no, it'd have to be something that they don't offer, something that's in, you know, outside of the school day. We try to make this incredibly narrow. But definitely, there's incredible, it's good for our students that there's more students involved. So there's a there's a positive benefit to our students for VOTAC students to be involved, but also for our community to see a larger marching band, because they could, they could literally feel it when they're, you know, St. Patrick's Day Parade, you see this group of 35 people coming down at you. So it's, we try to keep it as narrow as possible. The short answer is yes, to the marching band, but no to the concert band.
Okay. And if anyone hasn't watched it, I recently watched the competition, and that was amazing. So I didn't realize that people move. Like, I knew that they marched, but I didn't realize they like move. I was like, wow.
Yeah. So I came off the summer teaching the Concord Blue Devils. They came in third place in the world at the world championships. And I had so many ideas, and we just threw it all together in a show, and that's what you got.
Oh, it's fantastic. So like I said, haven't watched it, you need to watch it. It was great.
Celine, thank you very much. Appreciate your time here tonight.
Hold on, Chris, have you?
Oh, okay, sorry.
So I echo everyone's comments about congratulations, numbers are great. Is there a number that we would have to cap? So thinking I'm a parent of a fourth grader, and that class is very large, would we have to cap band if numbers were so high? Or is it just a shift of people moving between chorus and band outside of concerts? Because I know space on the stage is limited.
So that's that's an excellent question. Our grade five and six, just how we do our schedule, that's that's pretty much set. Seventh and eighth grade would have the most shift. Let me, so let me jump to high school. High school, it's beneficial to keep them all together. If you separate them, they're you're missing parts. It's not, it's not the best experience. So even if we're not able to get everybody, it's good to just keep everybody together. But our seventh and eighth grade will see the most fluctuations. So right now, it's I have four sections of seventh and eighth grade band. So that fits nicely into two periods with that rotating schedule. The chorus, if that gets any bigger, we would have to find an additional section, which means that we'd not be able to offer something else. So let's say we wouldn't be able to offer high school electives, or we wouldn't be able to offer, you know, maybe singing, you know, for grade six or something like that. We're trying to, but we're kind of limited. So capping, it's our hope not to, but it could be a possibility if we're having issues with staffing. And so.
Okay. And I just wanted to bring up the point with with community, especially the marching band, I think, has tied this together. You know, you bring a group of people who are coming out for sports with people, a group of people who are coming out for band, and the whole community comes together. I think it's fantastic for not only the school community, but Abington at large. And I also feel like, especially on the band side, but probably on the vocals as well, you bring together people who speak all different languages at home, because in order to play an instrument, you don't necessarily have to be fluent in English. And I think that's very important for us as we think about Vision of the Graduate, about students being able to intermingle with people who aren't necessarily in their core friend group. You've got people from all walks of life who come together in the music department. And I think that's huge for all of our students and the community. So thank you for being such a great mentor to everyone.
Yes. And we always look for music curriculum that different languages, different cultures. There is lacking in terms of Portuguese music. That's a problem that I found. I found a couple of things that are online are like, it's not representative of the culture. Music books are only in two languages for band, music and French. Why not Spanish? I couldn't, or even additional languages. So we do have some barriers, but there are some kids that you they will light up as soon as they, all right, push that button, blow that air, play that note. Okay, that's called a B flat. And you could see like, you know, limited English, but they're just they're aspiring to be better, which is exciting.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Celine Ali.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Taking the award.
I'll take it. Let there's any questions. So up next is the Director of Student Services, Dr. James Robbins. It's just two homeschool requests. So the committee wants to look it over if they have any questions. Dr. Robbins is here to answer. But if not, I'm just looking for a motion to approve the recommended home education programs for the two students listed here for the remainder of this school year, over this school year. for the two students listed here for the remainder of this school year, over this school year. Is there a second?
Second.
Paul, favor?
Hi.
Thank you. I'm gonna play around with the agenda a little bit right now. We're gonna go to Scott, we're gonna go to an update on, so Felicia and I have invited Town Manager Scott Lambiasi here tonight to speak to, am I okay? Okay. To speak to the committee about the overview of proposed trash plan. We feel it impacts everybody, so especially in this case, impacts our budget as we go into town meetings. So we thought it'd be appropriate to hear from Scott, as well as, if any answer any questions that any of us may have.
Great, thank you very much, thank you for inviting me here. I do appreciate it, and I do recognize that the school committee probably doesn't get too involved with waste hauling all that often, except maybe the dumpsters behind the building. But this is kind of, it's sort of a bigger, broader subject, and there's been a lot of folks that have been working on this together. There's several folks that are at the table right now. On your group, that's been working along with some of the selectmen, and some of the finance committee members, and a lot of our finance staff. And one of the big issues with this particular line item that's in the budget is that it grows at such an exponential rate that we can't control. And there's other things that are in the budget that do grow, but we do have much better control over it. I've looked at this since I came here, and like most towns, the community looks at services that we provide, and they certainly expect a lot of different services. And, you know, trash pickup is just kind of one of those services that we're always going to do. It's just, we have to look at it a different way that we want to have it, to pay for it. So, like I said, one of the proposals that we want to push forward, and we're trying to build sort of a coalition, and that's the reason that I'm bringing it here right now, is it's been a very difficult budget year, and either way, I think we would want to propose this either now, or, as you know, I brought it up at last year's town meeting, it was, I call it my big cliffhanger. And we're bringing it back this year. But when we have rates like this, our hauling expenses, and that one line item has increased over fifty-six percent in just the past four or five years. That's just something that is not sustainable within our budget. And if it's in there, and it's continually doing that, all it's doing is taking away from other services. It's taking away from the school department, it's taking away from the public's works, it's taking away from fire and police. And it's just not, it's not manageable. Like I said, there are other things that increase not nearly at that rate. Health insurance, and our liability insurance, and those things, we have better control of, and we do find ways, and we work hard to settle those and/or save money where we can. This is just one of the ones that we can't. So the proposal that we've put forward, and again, we're sort of working now to meet with school committee. I'll be meeting with the Board of Health pretty soon. I'll roll it out to the finance committee, and eventually, you know, the selectmen, again, have been on board all along, sort of as far as discussing the plan. But we want to go into town meeting, making sure that everybody agrees with it. So what the plan would be, is that we would take the, we would take it out, we'd create an enterprise fund, and the community, the homeowners, will receive a bill every year. It'll reflect what the actual cost of removing their rubbish is. We do recognize that in the past over thirty-four years, I think there were two different overrides. And we do recognize that we want to make sure that we do something to make up for that. So, we do want to use on that first year, use free cash to actually pay for the program. So again, there'll be no difference to a homeowner, their trash will be picked up. It won't be in the budget anymore, but we won't charge them for it that first year. On year two, we would use free cash again to subsidize fifty percent of that. So they will get a bill on year two, and it'll be approximately a hundred and seventy-five dollars. Year three, we would subsidize it again, and that year, it would be two hundred and sixty-two dollars plus or minus. And then finally, on the fourth year, would be the first year where we'd expect the homeowners to pay the full cost of it, which would be somewhere around three hundred and fifty dollars a year. And we've looked at the other communities around us. I was actually, I believe I was on the Board of Selectmen at the time, in Whitman, when we made this transition. And again, it's trying to, you know, and certainly at that time, as a homeowner there, is to realize that, yeah, it is a service, and it's a service that we're used to, and we don't want it to go away. But not all services can be just rolled into the tax base, for the same reason then, as I'm bringing it up now. Again, we've looked at the surrounding communities to try and see, you know, are there other ways that we should be dealing with this, are there other ways to deal with it? The state's model was a, and what they really are encouraging us to do, which we really are not proposing, is a pay-as-you-throw program. The state wants us to have everybody go to the store and buy bags, and it's, it does make sense as far as it being equitable, because you truly do, you would still get a much smaller annual fee, but you're only paying by however many bags you buy. It's problematic as far as figuring out who's going to buy the bags, where you can find the bags, what happens if they run out of bags, and then what happens when somebody doesn't actually use a bag, and we go pick up their trash. So this did seem like the best method. Other communities have required you to take care of it yourself. A town of Hanson, I think you pay over six hundred dollars a year. Town of Whitman, I think it's just over three hundred and something dollars a year. If you were to hire a private contractor to come and pick it up, you'd probably spend close to a thousand dollars a year. So, it is, again, to the homeowner, there would be no change in the service itself. It's the same cuts, the same totes. Right now, it would be the same company, we have another year or two on the contract with them. So absolutely, the only thing that would change is, eventually, they would receive a bill for it. Like I said, again, it's just eroded at so many different areas of the budget. We're in a very difficult budget year as it is. Even taking this out at this time, we're still probably at a million two as a deficit. So we're still working that out. We had our state numbers come in yesterday, and I'm sure Felicia's told you, that stellar is not a word I would use. Disappointing is probably more appropriate. By the time you're all done with looking at assessments that we got, we're somewhere a little over one percent on that increase, so. And I don't see it changing, I don't see it changing with the state, with the Senate, or with the House. So there isn't help on the way. We're going to have to deal with this ourselves, and this is really the beginning of this proposal. We do intend to have a open house, so to speak, where we'll have the, invite the community to come. We're planning it for March nineteenth, I believe. We want the community to come in, we want them to ask questions, we want to, we're going to get information out there to them in the interim to say, hey, what are your biggest concerns with this? What are your questions with this? We want to be prepared, we want everybody to know that we are not taking this lightly. This isn't just, it certainly isn't, you know, I know if you follow some of the, you know, the Facebook out there, they might say it's because of mismanagement, or we're not dealing with our funds properly, but it's actually just the opposite. This is a, we're trying to be responsible, fiscally responsible for the next several years to come. If we do not deal with this now, and we do not deal with this here, it's just going to continue to compound. And again, like I said, we're already faced right now with making some serious decisions, and if things don't change, they're going to be very, you know, affect services all around. This will help us quite a bit, so. I'm open for questions? I wish I had brought some, like, awards, a bag of trash, I don't know.
Quick question, is the, this allocation for the four years, is that the same for businesses as well as schools?
No, we don't, so the schools and the municipal will be taken out, will still carry a budget to pick up our municipal waste, meaning the schools, DPW buildings, town hall, et cetera. Commercial, we do not pick up. So we only pick up curbside homeowners, and that's, it's forty-five-hundred-plus or minus customers. Everybody will have an option to opt out as well, if they can show us that they've hired a licensed, whether it's troop or ram, or if they have a licensed person who's going to, willing to come to their house and pick up, then that's fine, they don't have to participate in this town program. I will say, it will be a lot more expensive, though. Our rates are going to be, you know, much lower than, you know, occasional private contractor coming up. I think the town of Plymouth does it, they have a transfer station. Everybody has to pay for a bag and a sticker, and go to a transfer station. I think the town of Rockland is a similar program to that. I think you can bring it to a transfer station, but you got to buy bags. So there's a lot of different ways to do it. This is the one that I think has the least amount of impact on your homeowner. I think it's the fairest way to do it, and it certainly helps us, you know, get a handle on what's, just like, again, it's just going to continue to take away from services.
Scott, I like, so, I obviously know the, I can see and heard you say like the need for it that's there. I can, and talking with Felicia, can understand that, I guess, is there a way for you to, I mean, this is probably tough, right? But you kind of hit on it, but without this getting through, this year, I mean, forget this year's budget even, but the future budgets beyond that are, we're going to be look, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, there'd be some serious, significant cuts made throughout the entire town, right?
I'm afraid there would have to be, yeah, and it would have to, I mean, look at this, it's personnel at that point. We don't really have much of an option. And everything has, you know, wherever you cut, it's going to be a profound effect, whether it's one of your buildings, or if it's police, or fire, or DPW, or town hall. It is going to have a profound effect on services. And then, everybody is doing, and, you know, collaboratively, all around, everybody does their best. I mean, you put some amazing department here tonight, and was very impressed to sit here and listen to that. And I will hear the same thing at my finance committee meetings, from everybody who's passionate about what they do. But they are all, right now, everybody's put forward level service budgets. They're all saying, you know, we would like to be able to do better, but we can't, and we need more, and we can't give it to them. And it, yes, it will be even worse next year.
I guess just logistically, is it still Boston Carding? Is it still the same barrels that we have now, is that the plan?
Yeah, nothing would change, and the barrels are actually owned by the town, so we'll always have the barrels. Boston Carding has been a great partner. They've, you know, since we brought them on, you know, my complaint line has gone from, you know, calls all day long to no calls.
I agree with you on that.
You know, we also have a person who's in the, in the health department, largely paid for by a grant that works pretty close to them to make sure that we don't have any problems. So, that's kind of nice. But yeah, right now, nothing would change. Again, I think we have one or two more years with Boston Carding, we'll put it out to bid again. My, you know, hope would be that we'd continue that partnership with them, but-
This has nothing to do with that, though, those are two independent things of each other.
Yeah.
When we said the forum was March nineteenth, right?
Yes.
Or, okay. I think I would just strongly urge people, if they have questions, to ask the questions of the people most equipped to answer them. There's charts, graphs, diagrams. When you talk about service level budgets, and then you look at cuts, and you look at more money coming out of people's pockets, it's very easy for things to get personal. And it's, it's a big deal. So just urging people to ask the questions of the people who really can best answer them, and really come out to community forums, things like that. I know that this is going to be discussed at a lot of meetings coming up. And that's all I'm going to say.
Yeah, and, you know, again, I'd be happy to come back again to this committee. I would, we'll be talking with the finance committee, but it, we're all very cognizant of what's happening. We understand that, yeah, we are building a huge DPW fire station project, and the voters have already approved that. We bought a fire engine last year, we are, we, the town just approved South Shore VOTEC building. So, yeah, there's expenses that are, that we're all going to see, but at the same time, we still want to make sure that we're providing the services that the town wants. This is the only way we're going to be able to do it.
I just had one question, from other towns that have similar programs with a fee-for-service that is, in my understanding, billed separately from your tax bill. I will get a bill in the mail from the town of Abington that says pay a hundred and seventy-five dollars in year two. What are collections like versus collections of taxes? Because it feels to me like I'm either going to pay that one seventy-five in my tax bill, or in this separate bill.
It's like when you get your sewer and your water bill. It'll probably actually come, my guess is we may send it out with the sewer and the water bill. And so, yeah, it'd be like anything else, if you don't pay the bill, it ends up compounding, it'll eventually end up as a lien.
And our collection rates-
We'll still pick up the trash, though, because that would be awful.
Our collection rate's much lower for sewer and water than they are for your tax bill. I'm just wondering if we as a town are still going to see a hundred percent of that money coming in, or if there's a haircut?
Yeah, no, our collections are very good.
Okay.
Yeah, no, we actually work very, and we don't, you know, obviously, we reach out to people and say, look, you know, you owe them, we work as well as we can with them. But yeah, no, our collection rates are very high.
Okay, thank you.
Scott, thank you very much for your time, I'm sure we'll be seeing you in the next month and a half, two months, or whatever. So town meeting, I guess, if you get the town meeting date, do you have that already?
Yes, the first Monday in April, I believe it's April seventh this year. It was April first last year, if you all recall. But yes, April seventh, and again, March nineteenth, we'll have a forum, and I believe we're going to do it here. So-
And we'll have that advertised.
Yeah, there's going to be a lot more information coming out, this is sort of the first of it.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. I also just want to thank Scott and the leadership at Town Hall. We have been invited, Sarah and I, along with Chris and Heidi, has sat in a number of the meetings over the last month or so to discuss this and the best ways forward. So, thank you for including us in those conversations.
No, thank you for working with us, very well appreciated, much appreciated.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
Good evening, all.
Now I'm going to go to Mr. Born, for the principal's report. Mr. Born, sorry about that audible.
No worries. Thank you, good evening, good to be here today. I have the opportunity every winter to present the school committee, the proposed changes to the program of studies for, in this case, be recommending a change to the current two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five program studies, and then bulk of the changes for the course changes would be for the next school year, the twenty-five, twenty-six program of studies. Without a doubt, the most substantive change on the memo before you is our change of language determining the Massachusetts competency determination. So, as I'm sure members of the committee and most of the public know, that Massachusetts voters in November voted to remove the MCAS test as the determinant of a competency determination for a high school student. So a brief little history lesson that's worth knowing, in nineteen ninety-nine, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts determined that each student must earn a competency determination, and then later in two thousand and three, said the test was the mechanism to do that. So what that November vote did was changed the two thousand, the two thousand and three vote test as the mechanism, but it didn't remove the competency determination language. So after that ballot measure passed, Dr. Basta, Ms. Casey, Ms. Park and I, in guidance, had met, have met with the state, have talked to each other in other schools. And what you can see is our recommendation, that should be the competency determination language for current Abington High School students and future Abington High School students. I will spare you a read-through, but we'll point out a couple of key points. It is important to know that any student that has, to date, including this year, earned a competency determination by any test, including the November retest, has met their competency determination, so they are, so to speak, grandfathered in. Many people were a bit surprised to learn, in the public, that this didn't end the MCAS test. We still offer in- Many people were a bit surprised to learn in the public that this didn't end the MCAS test. We still offer and will have students take the MCAS test. In fact, they will be required to sit for at least one MCAS test in science, in math and in English in their high school career. And what we have basically determined is that by students successfully completing a ninth and tenth grade English course. Algebra one and geometry course and a laboratory science course, most typically biology, chemistry or physics. That they will have met a competency determination. That is also harmonious with our requirements for local graduation. So that functionally means any of our students that would then on track to earn Abington High School diploma would be able to receive that full diploma. There is a language at the bottom, just because we do have students who transfer in. We have other circumstances with students that the principal may on a case by case basis review students transcript. To determine if the successful completion of a course or similar course merits a reasonable equivalent for competency determination. So, for example, sometimes we get students from out of state who may not have taken the cadence of science courses that we have. But if they take a science course here, we can decide either through the transcript review or our local transcript that that. Is inadequate or a reasonable equivalent to one of those courses. Think it'd be reasonable for me to pause here just to see if there are any questions on this section before I carry over with any of the other changes.
I ask you one.
By all means.
So and it's more, this is more always when Dr. Michelle and I talk about canceling schools with the only one or we are we on an island here? I feel like I've so some other other school committee, other groups have started to pass competency determinations. This looks familiar. This seems familiar. Is this? Is this kind of a standard across the area or across the state, wherever you want to call it, from what you're seeing, Jonathan?
Yeah, I believe so. So originally, a language and directive that came out from the state was basically two sentences and felt kind of. I think unsatisfactory by and large. Dr. Basta found this from the Everett Public Schools that we've talked about. We we worked over, made some edits to. So this seems pretty common. I will share that in my South Shore principals job alike. People have asked, what are you using? And I've shared this as a. As an example, so they may have taken that and utilized that similarly. So this wouldn't be just an Abington thing by any stretch of the imagination.
And yeah.
You want to go? I'm just going to tag on to the beginning of what? I'm, Mr. Born, just said that after the initial guidance from DSE, they had they delivered more guidance. There were, there was a webinar and that really, this is captured capturing what they recommend.
Okay.
They said that, you know, districts could include other items. These are the basics that they recommend because it's tied to the standards in ELA math and science.
What the MCAS was designed to check.
Which would be exactly.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions for Mr. Born?
So just to reiterate, in order to graduate from Abington High School. You have to both fulfill our local competency determination, which is what's being recommended tonight. And also fulfill the local graduation requirements, which are around credits and courses.
And I included those just as a reference in this language as well. And and just for clarity, I do think this might require, Mr. Coyle, like two votes, one for this.
Yeah, we're going to do two, yeah, definitely.
Okay, thank you. Any, I will move on to then the proposed course changes for the twenty-five, twenty-six.
John, let me just do this one first.
That's fine. Yep.
Does anybody else have any questions for Mr. Born on this one?
I am going to probably sound like an idiot, but on the the second page of it, I'm really struggling to read this sentence. And I just want to make sure that it's correct as is or we don't have to make an edit. The very top, it says, so on curriculum frameworks in the area measured by the MCAS High School test described in section one I administered in. Twenty twenty-three. Someone help me.
Is that maybe just the Roman numeral one?
I believe it's just the Roman numeral.
But I it is redundant if it's.
And but where is Roman numeral one?
It's sec, it's act, it's not here. It's section one from the statute.
Ah, okay.
Language is actually lifted right from the statute.
Okay.
So there should be, should there be? Should there be parentheses at the end, determined by the board, unquote? Is that?
Or at least a parentheses around the I to make it look like it's a one.
A Roman numeral.
I'll get rid of it.
No, I meant here, should there be quotes to close? Should there be quotes to close the quote? And that starts Massachusetts competency determination as defined by the Massachusetts Department of Elementary. Oh, no, I see.
I think it's closed just that competency.
It is, it's just that.
I do think we could add at the end the reference to the statute.
But is it a redundancy with the written one and the Roman numeral one? Or is it, are we looking at?
I think it, I think that would be in parentheses. It's clarifying the written one means the numeral one. So I think that we can add those parentheses and then also at the end of that paragraph, parentheses, and we'll just cite the statute.
Can we vote on it?
Yes.
Since it doesn't change the meaning of it.
It was just amended. So, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Perfect.
Although I'm not going to remember what he said. I was just. As amended, yes.
Clarify, yeah.
So I'll be looking for a motion to approve the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five proposed revisions to the program of studies as presented and then amended by Dr. Basta.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you very much.
Just last need to say, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Revisions to the program of studies relative to competency determination?
I don't know.
Is that, is that, Chris, you think we'll need that to be that specific? I don't think so.
No, I don't think so.
Is this, this refers to that. I apologize.
And I think it's understood, but just your eight or eight, I would obviously recommend this this change as amended to the twenty-five, twenty-six program of studies as well. Into the courses. So the first would be the art department. This is actually not a substantive change, but worth addressing that in our conversation with Ms. Poirier, the director. We currently offer an elective drawing and painting. She recommends we split those to two electives of drawing and drawing, painting, sorry. And just to tease out student interest in those two cases, there are some students who are more interested in one medium than the other, and this would allow them to go deeper into their studies in art. And then potentially move them further along in their studies. We are going to offer these split, but there is a distinct chance we do run it combined based on the numbers. So this is a bit experimental. So I just wanted to be clear if anyone's at home that their son or daughter signed up for paint, painting, but was scheduled for drawing and painting. Those likely a scheduling consideration rather than a program of studies consideration. Most of the other changes to the art are just to open up availability for students and to just explain a little bit that students can repeat courses for further study. Based on scheduling and availability. Moving on to page six, which is the business class, the the change there worth noting is just again, opening the availability of this class. Based on recommendations as opposed to prerequisites. So it opens up the class to more students. In the math department, there are several substantive changes and I can broadly describe most of them. With meeting with Ms. Doherty, as many of you know, the math department has been incredibly hard at work revising and updating their curriculum. This represents in broad strokes those curriculum changes and improvements. In general, this has advanced certain concepts and topics in math earlier in a student's math experience through the high school. A lot of that has been done in response to post-COVID kind of catch-up review based on gap filling. The math department now feels for a variety of reasons that they're able to move some of these more complicated, complex topics up earlier. Based on fixed instruction at seventh and eighth grade. So by and large, for most of the algebra one courses, that is why those changes were made. The precalculus course also references that change in what students would be going into precalculus with from their prior algebra studies as well. One other change is the senior math class is recommended that that gets moved to the appendix. So it doesn't disappear forever, but it would not be offered to students. Senior math came to be functionally here at the school, something that was potentially needed for seniors that needed. More remediation and additional review in MCAS-based subjects to pass the MCAS exam. That is now functionally rendered moot by the change in the competency determination. What it does bring back is a class from the appendix called discrete math. Which is something that I actually recall from my previous tenure at the high school. And that is much more kind of project-based math and logic. It's really quite fascinating. You could read in the course description there. Some of the other analogies are if you're renovating a house all the way down to the studs, what do you call first, the plumber, the electrician, the sewage, drywall, and it helps. Map out some of those things and it really is like a project management kind of mindset. It's a neat class that the department is pretty excited to bring back. So those would be most of the math changes. And then finally, in health. As you may have heard from previous presentations by Ms. Daisy. The Massachusetts, the state of Massachusetts has recently updated the curriculum frameworks for health and wellness. And these new course changes reflect some of those changes in topics as well as some additional updates to courses of life one oh one and mind, body, spirit. The health course, which is a freshman requirement. It just speaks to some of the outlined changes in the topics covered in that class. And that would take effect for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. And then again, the last piece you see is moving senior math into the appendix and discrete math out of the appendix. Those are the substantive changes recommended for the next year's program studies.
When these are changes? If there's no questions, I'll be looking for a motion to approve the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six proposed revisions as presented by Mr. Born.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Born. Next up, so we were supposed, so Anna was going to do a presentation. Just let the committee know, Felicia and I. Felicia talked to me about having Anna have, sorry, have present, something to present each time as she saw fit. She's been working with Mr. Born to come up with topics. So she had something for tonight. Something came up for her, so she couldn't make it. So we're just going to push, she asked if we could push it to February. So that's what we're going to do. Report of the superintendent, Dr. Felicia Michelle.
Great, thank you. Tonight I have a few items for your consideration. The first are two additional policies that we would like you to consider. These have been reviewed by our policy subcommittee. I'd like to thank those members. And so I'll describe the first one is a proposed policy to add to our policy manual regarding. Therapy and emotional support dogs in our schools. As we know, as we have seen. Evidence has shown, research has shown that support animals, support dogs in our. Schools during times of crisis have been very, very helpful. I can think of two, three situations over the last few years that we have unfortunately had tragedies and we were lucky enough. To have groups of professionals with their therapy dogs come in to our schools. We did not have a policy. We would like to add this policy to tighten up the guidance around that. This is a policy that is, has been used in a very similar policy in other neighboring communities. This would provide an ability for staff members to bring trained, certified therapy emotional support. Dogs to school to participate in the life of the school. There is a formal process that a person would go through my office to submit documentations around vaccinations and training. Insurance and be approved to be able to to bring a therapy dog into the school. We actually have a current staff member who has a therapy dog who would like to bring her dog into school. So. If this is something that is considered this evening, I think that would something that would start pretty, pretty soon. There's also an opportunity for families to opt out of the ability, you know, if they don't want their child to be with the therapy dog, then they'd be able to opt out of that.
Can I just ask you what that means? Like, what is if they opt out, then they're out of their classroom?
Sure. So, for example, and I'm thinking of not in Abington, but I know of another person who brings. Her support dog and is a reading specialist. So brings the dog in and reads with younger students. If a family opted out of that, then the dog wouldn't go into that classroom.
Okay, 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 okay.
Same thing if it's in a therapy set, setting, then the dog wouldn't be in the therapy setting with with the students.
Okay, so it's not that the student has to find somewhere else.
No, 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 no. Thank you for, thank you for asking.
Okay. That was my one question.
So essentially, this is allowing for it to happen, but also is written in there that if it doesn't seem to be working out, the school has the overall authority to say. No, thank you.
One hundred percent.
Okay.
And to clarify, this policy is nothing to do with Harlow as a member of our Abington Police?
It does not.
And it does not have anything to do with a student who has a service animal that needs to be in district. This is separate.
Thank you for asking that a service dog is under an entirely different category around ADA, Americans with disabilities. This is. Different than that.
Therapy emotional support focus.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And this is just an every once in a while thing?
This could be a staff member who brings their trained emotionally, emotional support therapy dog to work every day. To work with students.
And one other question. Allergies.
Yep. So that would be a reason, for example, that a family might opt out. From having the emotional support dog in the student's classroom or being in an office where the dog is. For for a therapy session.
And the language right now, I know this sounds ridiculous, but we're looking at emotional support dogs, not emotional support ostrich or.
Thank you. Right now, we are looking at emotional support dogs.
Okay.
Yes.
Felicia, would you handle all the opt-outs?
Yes.
Because I'm just, I'm thinking more if somebody doesn't want to be the one, you know what I mean, kind of thing? It goes through you and you keep it confidential.
Yep. Thank you.
And when would the families get the chance to opt out? Would this be at the beginning of the school year or?
So I would envision that part of the opening of school would be, and look at, we have, I'm going to use my dog, Mini, the emotional support dog at the Abington High School. And then probably some of this is if you don't want your child. I think we'd have to work on the language around that, but that would be an opportunity to opt out. From speaking with my colleagues and the experience we've had here. That typically doesn't happen. People are pretty excited about it, except in allergy cases.
Can I just come back, sorry, to the to the frequency of how often someone might bring one in?
Yep.
Only that the dogs require care and extra minutes of the day. So I'm just imagining, for example, me, I wouldn't have any more minutes in my day to do my job and bring in an animal. And do the things that are required with said animal. So just wondering.
So I would envision as part of the vetting or getting approval process. That you would come in and talk to me about what your schedule looks like. You might be a school adjustment counselor, for example, and could say. I anticipate bringing the dog in three days a week or five days a week. I'm going to use my lunch break to take the dog out. The dog has been trained so that. Doesn't need frequent breaks during the day. I anticipate having a bowl of water. There will be anything eaten during when we have students there. If you came in and said, I teach Spanish or French at the high school, I would like to bring in my emotional support dog to work with my students. I would ask you at what time during the day do you anticipate you would able to be able to bring your dog out? Do you see this interfering with your ability to instruct? Part of the policy is the dog has to be on a leash all the time and be held by their owner all the time. How would you do that in your classroom? If you are a reading specialist, it might be more conducive to that as opposed to being a Spanish teacher. That might be more challenging. So I think each situation would be evaluated in that way. Because, like you've said, and I think that's important, having, bringing your dog to school to support your students can't. Impact your ability to support students.
And do we have a limit on the number of dogs? How many people, just in case, let's say there are many therapy dogs out there? Is everybody bringing in their therapy dogs to school?
It would have to be, it would come through, it would be suit, it would come through my office. So that would be something else we'd look at. You know, we're not going to have four therapy dogs at the same time at the AEP, for example. There's five classrooms. It wouldn't be conducive to student learning to have more than that. This, what's also really important, and I think you're bringing this up, this is about what's good for kids, not what's about. I would love to bring Vinny every day. That would be great, but that would be good for me, not for the kids. I also think this would be something managed by both my office and James, Dr. Robbins' office, Student Services, to really determine what is best for our students.
Yeah, I'm comfortable, I mean, my comfort lies in the fact that it seems, it gives you broad discretion.
Correct.
Especially the very ending where the key detracts from educational programs, you have, like, is, and they have, there's no recourse, if you say they have to leave, or any administrator, then they have to go, so that, that is what gives, without that, if it was a all, if it was, if it could have been a free-for-all, then no, but I don't think that would ever come to be here, so.
I also appreciate that this is a policy that is, you know, beyond, it lives in our policies, but I also am someone who is very cognizant of the fact that there's many programs out there that can call your dog a therapy dog, or emotional support dog, and I can assure you that that is something that I'll be looking into with the person, is what the program was, what the requirements were, because it's very easy to get a little vest.
That was actually my next question, is there a list of, like, verifiable?
You can, you can vet, because I've actually looked into it for Vinnie, prior to this, but there are, you can vet the programs online.
Can I ask, in, at the very last, which I think, Chris, this is the section you're talking about, it says, "They must be removed if instructed to do so by a school administrator." That would include whom, just a building principal and you?
Administrator, yep, assistant principal, principal.
Assistant principal as well?
Yep.
Okay.
So this is just a policy to, for you, for people to bring them in, it's not giving the green light to have lots of animals at the school?
Nope. Specific permission will be obtained through a formal process from the superintendent in conjunction with the school principal, in order for a therapy emotional support dog to enter an Abington Public Schools building. We won't become doggy daycare.
So theoretically, in the past, when we have utilized them in large-scale trauma scenarios, we probably should have had something like this in place already? If I'm reading that correctly, and not that we, but it's just good.
Yes, this will help us in those cases, and hopefully, we never have another trauma that we need to bring in a number of dogs. Those are all affiliated with organizations, so they've already been vetted, it's like, it's a little bit, it's a little bit different, but this is an overarching, there, we now have a policy around having dogs in school.
So with that, I'll be looking for a motion to approve policy IMGB, which is Therapy Emotional Support Dogs in Schools, as presented by Dr. Michellea.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The second policy, proposed policy amendment, is to our background checks for possible employees and/or volunteers. This adds to our current background check procedure. What is being proposed is to add, right now, if you are applying to be a, if you are offered a position, or you are volunteering with our students, and you have the opportunity to be alone with students, you would have to complete a quarry, which would be reviewed, have fingerprints and a fingerprint report, which would be reviewed, and now we're proposing to add a Department of Child and Family Services review, to ensure that the person has not had supported reports of child abuse, physical or sexual, which, which in, in this particular case, would not have resulted in police action, so wouldn't come up in a quarry. So again, this would be for those people that we require fingerprinting of, it wouldn't be someone who we require a quarry and not fingerprinting, but if you're gonna have any opportunity to be alone with children, then we would require both fingerprinting and this report.
Felicia, who would, because I know for the fingerprinting, the individual pays for that, who would pay for this?
There is not a cost.
Oh, okay.
It would be requested by the school district, we would then, there's a form that employee, prospective employee fills out, then we submit that, and we get that report back, and those are reviewed by central office, a central office administrator. And there's also included in there is an opportunity to appeal a decision, should, just like there is for fingerprints, results in fingerprints and quarries, I should also say that, that a lot of, there are people who have things, for example, that come out on a quarry that you wouldn't be proud of, but we make decisions, if something that happened 25 years ago, 30 years ago, that wouldn't impact your ability to supervise a dance, or even be a teacher, and that would be the same here.
I may have missed this, when just trying to read through it as you were saying, so I apologize if you said this two minutes ago. This, this would apply to those that are already getting to the level of fingerprinting?
Correct.
Okay.
So for parents or volunteers, that would be, say, the people who are chaperoning out-of-town field trips, things like that, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
But not those who are going?
Not those that are chaperoning a dance.
Okay.
So I actually, when I chaperoned New York, I had to be fingerprinted.
Right, I did to go to Philadelphia as well.
Yep, so. You had an opportunity to be alone.
Yeah, okay.
And will this be, if we vote this tonight, will this impact the Washington DC trip?
It, it would be something that would go into effect today, so we would.
And would that give us ample time to?
Yes.
Put that into effect for the parents who do want to chaperon for Washington DC?
Yes.
Oh, and does this go retro for anyone that's been hired?
It would not.
Can you, on the same lines of that, can you remind me, once, so we have an individual who's worked with the district for 20 years, I know as a volunteer, I need to re-quarry every three, do our existing staff go through the process every X years?
For a quarry, yes.
Just a quarry, but nothing else is done after hire?
That's correct.
Okay.
Unless you drive, you drive a school vehicle, then you, every three years, actually, the state just changed the driving record portal, so like, as a matter of fact, I got an email yesterday that said, there's someone that works in Abington, his driver's license, something has been added to their record, so that's in real time, that's new, so, but not for, we don't fingerprint unless there's a break-in service.
And with the quarry, do, if there is something that comes up 20 days after hire, do we get notified, like you were just saying with the driving?
There is not.
So we would potentially find out three years later that, oops, on day two, someone was arrested for something?
That's correct.
Okay.
If it was local?
Right.
You would hear from the Abington Police Department?
Yep, okay.
Most likely. Yes, that's a, yes.
Okay.
Where do they have to go for this?
They just have to fill out a form in our office, and then we do it.
Okay. So it's not like fingerprinting, where you go into the creepy?
It is not.
No, I think that's everything, if you were looking through the packet, it's really just the last two pages of this.
Section.
Policy section, that are new, that are being added. So it's the top of the page, it starts Department of Children and Families. Everything else is in the existing policy.
And just, for clarification's sake, if something comes up, who is the, who is privy to that information, and how is that handled with the adult?
Great question, so the, the final decision is made by me. School administrators and central office administrators, we actually signed an affidavit that says we are, have the ability to look at the data in quarries, for example, there are decisions that are made, again, just because something is on a quarry, or on a fingerprint, or possibly this, that doesn't mean that they'll necessarily be excluded. There have been times when I've spoken, they get a cop, if, if we say they can't work here, or can't supervise the field trip, then they have a right to what we saw. So there's a letter that we have sent that with the report that we received, with information on, in case the information is incorrect, on how to have it changed. Many different organizations can receive quarry reports, basketball, if you're a coach, YMCA camps, but the report that, but those reports only include when someone has been found guilty, we receive a report that's anytime, anything that has to do with police involvement. So I may see a quarry report that is many, many, many arrests, but no convictions, and so we're, we are making decisions based on that.
Any others have any questions?
Can I just, the, the top of the DCF section just says, "All prospective employees" will be required to, where am I missing the piece where if I chaperon a field trip? Out of state?
It, it actually may, that is.
I was trying to look back at the, the fingerprinting.
Yeah, that may be something we want to consider here.
I think it's at the, it's at the very beginning of the entire policy, it mentions volunteers, but I think we could amend that sentence right there, so that it's clear that the DCF check is for prospective employees and volunteers who maybe, may have the opportunity to be.
I think it's a great idea, I just wanted to make sure our policy supports what we ask of them.
Because the document basically contradicts itself, we don't change that.
Right, I think it says it earlier, but not in here, so if we were to say, "All prospective employees and identified volunteers."
So we are doing this for all employees?
Perspective.
Perspectives.
Perspective, okay. And that would include a substitute teacher, someone who might be in the building just infrequently, okay.
Food service, substitute. So all prospective employees and identified volunteers?
Identified as by you, because you know what they are.
Right, yep.
Because in Section A of ADDA, on that first page, it just says that as appropriate, we may obtain the fingerprint for any volunteer subcontractor or laborer, we may just want to also add to that section?
So Section A?
Section A.
Number one.
Number three.
Three.
Or, yeah, I think number three is the section that captures our flexibility to do it for volunteers.
I agree.
We may want to add it there, too. Although that's under the fingerprint one, so maybe, never mind, that's under the fingerprint heading.
May I suggest that we replicate A3 at the top of the DCF?
That's a good idea, that works.
If you would like, we can make these amendments and bring it back to the February school committee meeting to vote on, or we can make these as amended.
I'm comfortable with the intent.
How long does, how long do these checks take?
Our understanding, we haven't done them, is that they're pretty quick, because it's a database.
Okay. I'm comfortable voting as, as discussed here.
All right, so no further discussion, I'll be looking for a motion to approve the policy ADDA as amended last by Dr. Michellea on background checks.
I can make the motion.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, and I apologize for that confusion. My last, it won't be my last item tonight, my last item tonight under this section is in regard to the Woodsdale Elementary Principal Search. As you are aware, Ms. Jen Bressi, the current principal at the Woodsdale School, has chosen not to seek a, a new contract for next year at the Woodsdale, so we'll be searching for a new principal, and I provided for you in your packet a timeline over the next, really, month and a half, two months, of how we anticipate doing that search. We plan tomorrow morning to post this position, advertise it for two and a half weeks, we'll advertise it where we advertise most of our positions, and that's through School Spring, which has become kind of the leading place to look for school jobs, but we'll also advertise it with other professional organizations to cast the widest net we can for, for applicant pool. Over the next two and a half weeks, we'll establish the screening committee, and I've identified there who would, who we're proposing to be on the interview committee, or screening committee, I apologize, Dr. Basta will chair, myself, Dr. Robbins, two building administrators, two Woodsdale Elementary staff members, two elementary parents, which would be one from Beaverbrook and one from Woodsdale, as Beaverbrook is the feeder school, and one school committee member. We anticipate reviewing applications the week after February vacation, identifying who we would like to bring in to interview, interview the first week in March, do site visits as appropriate, and finalist interviews with our central office team, and with the desire to introduce the new Woodsdale principal March, at the March School Committee meeting. Ms. Bressi has indicated, and we believe that she will help in any way that she can to ensure a smooth transition to the next principal, and we appreciate that.
Anybody have any question?
Can I just clarify, and I should know this, I'm sorry, would the contract start date be July 1st?
July 1st.
Okay.
Thank you. So there's, I'm, I'm not, I don't, there's no motion required here, the only thing would be to have a school committee member that would like to serve on the team, and if you don't have one tonight, then just to let me know.
I do, it'll be Melanie Wenny.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
I'm gonna.
RB of Sarah's section.
Sorry, Sarah. So I'm gonna provide an update, a budget update tonight, because you have the, great, so as I said when Scott was here, we have been at the table with town hall over the last month or so, looking at the FY26 budget, and discussing revenue, discussing school and town budgets, in anticipation of getting the governor's budget that came out last week, and as Scott indicated, it was less than overwhelming. The school department has received an increase in our Chapter 70 funding of about $200,000, which is not what we would have liked, but that's, that's where it was. I don't anticipate that going up significantly between now and, and the end of the fiscal year, when the state has a budget, so that doesn't help the town as a whole. Also, as Scott indicated, departments were asked to provide a level service budget, and what that means is a budget that replicates what we have this year for next year. So I have for you tonight a level service budget, and I'll explain what, where I, where we took reductions. So you'll remember some of these from our budget presentation earlier in the month, we have contractual obligations, our 150E line, which is our enablement to negotiate, as you know, we're negotiating with all of our collective bargaining units this year. So that's 1.1 million 286,300. So that's 1.1 million 286,351. Level service being that we replicate what we have this year to next year. We took out the new position requests, and then we have the retirement offset of $22,197. We have made no changes to our special education program with other districts at this time. Again, as we start the budget process, we are conservative on our special education tuitions and reimbursements, and as we move closer to town meeting, we might be in a position to hope that circuit breakers are going to come in at a higher percentage, or that some of the students that we anticipated might need additional services, next year might not. It can also go the other way, that we find that we need more services for students, but right now, we're holding steady with programs with other districts. So that's an increase to our budget of $329,012. In other school services, you'll also notice that we have removed the additional two-run buses for home-to-school. This is that bus that we had spoken about that would be two runs, it would be a high school run and a Woodsdale run at about $85,000. And again, because it's replicating this year's services to next year, that's been removed. So the increase in other school services of $110,276. And then through our conversations with the leadership at, the finance leadership at Town Hall, they have indicated that our instructional materials of 100, and our increase in instructional materials of $112,285, and our student and staff laptop replacements of $240,000 would be paid for through the town's capital plan. So right now, we have a total increase of $1,703,442, or 5.53%. This number has been shared with Town Hall, and that's where we are at today. I anticipate, over the next month, as we continue to move towards our April, early April Town Meeting, that we'll have a better picture of really what the town, what the town can support, for not just the schools, but for all departments.
So right now, as this is, we're not adding, but we are also not cutting any staff?
That is correct. Thank you.
But to clarify, level service is not, level service would be the same service if our demographics were the exact same, with the exact same means and the exact same enrollment. That's what level service means. It doesn't mean that today our class size is 24 or 25. Next year, it could be different depending on where our enrollment is.
Yes. Thank you. Are there any questions?
No.
I hope to have, well, we will have more information in the next meeting, and as was indicated as of today, we're not making reductions in staff. We hope that continues. But also, as Scott indicated, there is still a deficit in the town, so we're continuing the conversations. Thank you.
I am all set.
Thank you.
New business establishment of the next School Committee meeting, Tuesday, February 25th, 2025, at 6:30 PM here in the library. Informational items. I have a letter here from Mr. Matthew McCarty congratulating Sally Hernandez being selected as Abington's 2025 Project 351 Ambassador. So Heidi, congratulations. Give it to Sally. Let her know.
Congratulations.
Some dates to remember, as Mr. Leonelli mentioned when he was up here, this coming Saturday, February 1st, is the SEMSBA festival auditions at the high school. Did I get that acronym right?
Yes.
Okay. Next Tuesday, February 4th, is an in-service early release day. And Monday, February 17th, to Friday, February 21st, is winter break. Anybody else have anything before the end of session? No? All right. So I'll be looking for a roll call vote in accordance with the Mass General laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, for the purpose of conducting strategy session for negotiations with the AEA units A and B and non-union personnel. To hold this discussion in open session may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the committee and not to return to regular session. Yes?
Yes.
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 Thank you very much.